So I move that remote participation for Mr. Caleb Rogers be approved.
I second.
Thank you.
Ms. Redcross? Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Chair Pons?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer?
Aye.
Ms. Prescott?
Aye.
Okay. Each of you have in your packets the minutes from the May 8th meeting. Are there any changes, corrections, thoughts? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So I move that the minutes of May 8th be approved.
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Redcross?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers? Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Chair Pons?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer?
Aye.
Ms. Prescott?
Aye.
Good, thank you. Takes us now to public hearings, and first is a public hearing for consideration and approval of the WRHA proposal operating budget for the FY '24 and the PHA Board Resolution Number 23-01. Mr. Franklin?
Okay. I apologize. I didn't, I needed to, I need to get to that section in my package. If you give me, give me one second, I'll be right with it.
Take another second, or four. I started early on you, sorry about that.
I was looking at the agenda. I was gonna go in the order of what we had, but I'm fine. I can adjust. Thank you. Alright, I'm ready. Attached, please find the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority's fiscal year 2024 budget for the beginning, that will begin October 1st, 2023, for the commissioner's review and approval. The budget represents an annual spending plan for all the activities administered by the authority. Notice of public hearing was published in the Virginia Gazette on Wednesday, July 26, 2023. The public housing operating budget summary, the proposed budget for public housing is balanced at $1,247,987. For the fiscal year 2024 budget, this is a 8.8% increase from the current operating budget. Revenues, we have two categories of revenue. We have the rental and other income, and then we have HUD subsidies. Under the rent, rental and other income, we manage 104 public housing units. Approximately $39,067 per month will be generated for our rents. This revenue projection is contingent upon the fluctuation of tenant income and their ability to pay during the fiscal year. The annual rental income estimated, is estimated at $468,808. Under other income, we are projecting a total budget of $12,064. Going on to our subsidies, we have two. We have the HUD operating subsidy, and we have the capital fund operating subsidy. Under the HUD operating subsidy, we're estimating $387,000. The authority anticipates receiving this fiscal year $338,541, which is $25,250, or 8% increase over what we projected in the budget of $313,291. The HUD funding formula for our WRHA involves eligibility determination, administrative scoring, and the availability of federal funds. The HUD Capital Fund Operating Subsidy for fiscal year 2024, we're projecting $380,000. This, in this budget, we programmed $316,000. However, we received word from HUD that we will be receiving $374,675. This is a $58,674 increase, or 19% increase from what we projected. Our expenses consist of two categories. We have our salaries, salary and benefits, and then we have maintenance. In this budget, we have programmed six full-time personnel, as well as a part-time, and that person is Ms. Julie Fares. She is our financial, finance director. We have a slight increase this year in the budget, which is due to employees receiving a COLA increase this year. The maintenance is another big-ticket item that generates a lot of expenditures. The authority will continue our efforts to modernize our existing housing stock, because as you know, it is aged. Hopefully, one day, we will be able to acquire some new, some new digs. Our mission is to provide physically sound, safe, decent, and energy-efficient environment that meets HUD's housing quality standards. So with those two items, when you look at the balance of them, of the budget for the total expenses, revenues, we have a balanced budget at $1,247,987. Happy to answer any questions. Attached to this report summary, we do have the actual budget, and we do have the actual expenditure and revenue breakdown. So if you have any, if you want to get into the nuts and bolts of the budget, I'd be happy to try to explain or talk about that. And then we'd also, for board consideration, we do have a resolution, Resolution 23-01, which has to be passed, and we'll pass that on, once it is, once the budget passed and you, and you move on this resolution, we'll pass that on to HUD, so that we can stay in compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I did just a couple of observations. I see that the HUD Capital Operating Subsidy is going up a little bit, and that's good, but, and that's a product of our rating. Is that what you were saying?
Absolutely. We are a high-performing agency, and when I mentioned about available funding, usually when you're a high performer, we get top digs. I mean, so right off the top, we get, we get whatever bonuses or increases that HUD will afford us. We usually fare well when it comes to the revenue stream.
Well, that's important, because as you mentioned, on the expense side, when you look at maintenance services, you know, going up some $46,000, that's putting money back into the properties, which goes back, goes back to the high ratings.
Exactly right. And one of the, I think, one of the digs that authorities get is they don't have the revenues, or they don't put the money back into the units. And sometimes they have units that are unoccupied for long periods of times, and so when that occurs, they're not really fulfilling their mission of providing affordable housing. And so by virtue of them not being able to fulfill that, that need, or that, to fill that gap, they get dinged. And so we've been able to, every time our units become vacant, we are turning them around, renovating them, making them suitable for occupancy. So we fare well when it comes to the evaluation.
And after all, that's the purpose of why we're here.
Absolutely.
Provide these housing. The other question I have, and maybe you can speak to it a little bit. It's a small amount of the budget, certainly on the income side, but it looked like, you know, we, actual 2022 other income was $42,000, and this year it's only $9, and next year your budget is $12. Did we, what changed?
What changed was our debt set-off. We have, have some discrepancies, and we want to be able to kind of go into that with some details, so that we, there are no errors, before we require people to make those payments, or at least seek the payment, debt set-off program with the state. And so by virtue of us not processing and not going forward with that, they, we want to, we don't want to reflect that as income as yet. So what you see basically is just the laundry services contract, and maybe some work order records, responses.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, Mr.?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Just thank you to your, your staff for being high-performing and being able to obtain these additional funds from HUD. As we know, with the current state of the economy, price of everything is increasing, so any additional money is extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. Thank you very much for all that you all are doing.
Agreed with that. No additional questions to run. Appreciate this profiling of additional money, and also some of the capital expense you've been doing on constructing laundry facilities, for instance, or security on-site. So appreciate your work as always.
Thank you. Ms. Prescott, anything? Okay. So with that presentation, there is a resolution. Would somebody like to make a motion? Oh, no, this is a public hearing, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. This is a public hearing, so if anybody in the public would like to come forward and speak to this, seeing no one in the audience, I assume not. I was trying to skip it. All right. That closes the public hearing. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Approve the budget?
Yep. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, so I, I move that we approve Resolution 23-01.
Second.
Ms. Redcross?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers? Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Chair Pons?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer?
Aye.
Prescott?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Takes us now to open forum. Again, an opportunity if anybody would like to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the open forum and move on to quarterly reports. And first, we have the quarterly financial report. Mr. Franklin?
Yes, sir.
Gonna have to get you a binder.
Yes, I need one. I'm over here struggling. I appreciate it, though. Thank you. All right, I, I found my, my spot.
All right.
Found my spot. All right. All right, financial quarterly report. Our rent revenues for the third quarter came in at $145,963 for year-to-date total of $366,601. This represents an 84% increase, represents 84% of the projected budgeted amount of $434,142. And at this time, our rent revenues are performing quite well. We have collected, in the other income line item, $6,690 for year-to-date total of $22,050, and this represents 58% of the projected budgeted amount of $37,666. And as I've indicated on numerous occasions, and I don't mind doing it again, our rent, our other incomes consist of our debt set-off, our work orders, and our revenue we generate from our laundry service contract. Our HUD subsidies, we are, we've received $253,906 in our HUD operating subsidy funds to date. This amount represents 81% of the projected amount of $313,291. We have also been notified by HUD that we will be receiving $374,670 in our capital fund grant for this fiscal year. However, no funds have been received to date, and I would like to pause a little bit, or go offline from the report, and give a new development or a new wrinkle that I want to ask the commissioners if you would, and help us by agreeing to come to another meeting, a special meeting, in September, so that we can take action on our capital fund five-year plan. So the issue is, we took action on a five-year plan in 2020. Did that basically in the midst of one that was already in, in works, I guess, one that was done by the former Secretary of Director, Ms. Melody Gates. So that plan went from 2017 to 2022. And so I was thinking that by making changes, because we wanted to be more descriptive of plans that we laid out for you all to take action on, to kind of give us a real picture of, of the investments going forward. So our plan, we put together, went from 2020 to 2025. HUD has, I guess, in their epic system, set up where you have to stay within that timeframe. So even though I submitted that plan to HUD, our representative in Richmond, and was told that this is great, this looks good, we just recently got word that it wasn't put in the epic system, and so it's not applying at this time. And so what we need to do is to go ahead and go through the process again of doing the public hearing, getting feedback from our residents, and then getting the commissioners to take action on, on the plan. Essentially, we'll make adjustments to what we've already done, but we just need to bring it back before you, and, and then have it start from 2023 to 2027. So it's kind of a technical wrinkle, but it's one that's necessary, because this is the kicker. We are scheduled to get $375,000 roughly, but if we don't put this in the system, we can't get our money.
I think we would all agree to have a meeting in September.
That's the issue, and I appreciate you being willing to consider that. All right, back to the report. All right, so our revenues that we generated to date are $642,557, and our expenditures are $909,584. As you can see, our expenditures are over revenue by $267,027. This is always usually the case around the third quarter. We get our HUD capital fund dollars, that usually puts us in the surplus at the end of fiscal year. And so we, we are looking forward to that being the case again, provided we do what we do a little housekeeping, right?
Mr. Franklin, if I'm, I'm sorry if I may interrupt.
Absolutely.
So you say here that we're scheduled to receive $374,000. Is that over and above what we already received?
Over and above.
Okay.
So that's what I say, we, when we put a number in the budget, we are trying to, it's hard to read HUD, so we try to be a little under, or I guess, try to get as close as possible, so, because we don't know what HUD is gonna do. And so for the past three, four years, they've surprised us with giving us the extra funds, and so I'm, I'm happy for that. But I always like to report that even though we put that in the budget, a number, a placeholder, when we actually get our money, you see the significant increases.
So when you look at the 24 budget that we just approved, that had $370, or whatever, that $380,000, so we would anticipate an additional?
Okay. See how, so that's, that's pretty much the trend, right?
Right.
This was our thing. We plugged that number in. Nope, we, we get that, and if they give us that, that'd be great, but based on what we've been doing, or what they've, how they've been evaluating us, we've been getting, have been getting over that amount.
So our revenue budget will be 1.6 rather than 1.2 something. Okay, I'm just, that's what I'm hearing. Good. All right, we'll meet in September.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so getting down to the causes of, I guess, things that are going on, and this is a chance for me to kind of talk about, you know, what we're dealing with, and how, on the maintenance side. So I just want you guys to know that right now, we, we're down a maintenance technician. It's on a more personal note, because Mr. Miller, who is one of our most valued technicians, he's, he's kind of a jack-of-all. I mean, because of him, we've been able to save, we were able to save in our budget in terms of having to go out for contracts, but he's been down for about a month now, a month and a half, and he's fighting stage-four cancer.
Oh, God.
So we ask that you keep him in your prayers. We had a chance to spend some time with him for lunch the other day, and was encouraged to see his spirit. He's still strong, he's still fighting. He's fighting lung, bone, and, and brain cancer.
Six.
He's, we're hopeful that he will be able to beat that. We also have been experiencing a high number of turnarounds. I was, had a chance to talk with counsel, and we have kind of stepped up our activities in terms of when, when people are committing fraud, or folks are acting unruly. We are, we're moving in a way where, where lease violations to, to get their attention, get them to make the corrective action. If they don't, then we take it to the next step. And so by virtue of our activities, we, and, and of course, the actions of our tenants, we've had to deal with a high number of turnarounds. And so that has increased our expenditure, expenditures within the budget. So I just wanted to kind of give you that, that background of what's driving our budgets. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions, fellows?
I have a, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
And this is just, just to understand, a turnaround, how does that contribute to expense? Is that because af, once, when you are turning around, there's just kind of some, you know, just maintenance that has to be done? Or how does the turnaround interact with expenses, I guess?
So with the turnaround, these units, our units have, some of them haven't had a chance to go through that whole renovation process. So when we get that unit for the first time, and vacant, we are going in, we're doing an assessment, and in most cases, it's in bad shape. So when we get it, we go in and we do, we're doing new cabinets, appliances, stairs, we're, we're changing the vanities, doors, putting down new towels, and in some aspects where floors are buckled, we're doing the total replacement. And we're, every sta, if it's a two-story, we're going in with caps on those stairs. So there's a, there's the old wooden stairs, so we're going in with the covers over those, so grips. So we're really kind of changing the way the unit looks and feels, and so that, that creates the expenditure.
Right, so that investment happens with every unit as it, as it turns around. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tyron, but just to sort of follow up on that, I know that you all started doing this more major maintenance fix after the, you know, people vacated a few years ago. So I would think that some of, as, as you've sort of caught up with the maintenance, that when people move out of some of the units, it wouldn't require quite as much maintenance.
I would say yes, but I know that in some aspects, depending on the...
Behavior?
Yes, I couldn't find that word, but yeah, we found that we've had to make improvements, even after making the investment. It's almost like being a gerbil in a cage, and will, so you just kind of, sometimes you just find yourself doing that. But you do what you have to do to make the unit, bring it up to, up to par.
And, and I would hope that if the tenants see an overall, you know, you all take an action, if people don't behave a certain way, or don't pay their rent, that those who are left in the unit say, hey, they're not fooling around, as far as some of the turnaround, and that the behavior of the remaining tenants might be a little better going forward.
Must have heard my conversation earlier. I was sharing a conversation with Mr. Shelton about the atmosphere in our communities. I feel like things are starting to shift a little bit, or at least that the idea of how we respond to them, what we, what we give of ourselves in terms of what our level of commitment to them. So we want them to feel comfortable, want them to know that if they call our lines, that we're gonna be responsive, but they have a lease, and we expect them to, to abide by the lease, and if they deviate, then we're gonna move in the direction that we need to.
Thank you. Nip it in the bud, I think, is what my mother used to say.
Ms. Redcross, anything? Ms. Prescott, or Mr. Rogers?
All right, nothing for me. Thanks, Tyron.
Thank you.
Well, and just to follow up on that, when you, when you look at collections being 84% of the annual operating income already, meaning people are paying their rents, and people are more likely to do that when they're in a place that they want to be, and people tend to take care of places that they want to be. And they want, they would tend to be more hospitable to their neighbors when they know that the landlord cares, and I think that's demonstrated in some rules. And while we hate to see anybody break the rules and have to be out of a place to live, it's a special place, and we want to make sure that it's available and nice to the next, next folks that come in. And there's a long list of folks that, that need housing, so.
That's true.
Thank you. Okay. Would you like to go on to quarterly operating report?
Absolutely, and I said that I would be brief, and I will, I will keep my word. So I will try to focus on things that you may not be up to speed with. If you have any questions of something that I don't discuss that's in this report, I'd be happy to go back and, and, and come back and talk about that. But I would like to kind of bring the attention to, I guess, the public works assistance. I just want to give a personal thank you to my staff and to Public Works and to the fire department. We truly feel like we are part of the city, even though I know we're a political, a separate political subdivision. But when we seek assistance, or when we need help, they've been there for us, and I, and I put some references in terms of what they were able to do for us. We had a severe leak, a ruptured pipe that was under a tree, and it was just hard to get to. And Public Works got right on that, and they spent a couple of days out there, but we didn't have to relocate our tenant. They weren't displaced because they didn't have water. Keep them going, keep them in place, and we really just appreciate for the relationship. We had a tree to fall down in Mimosa, and just as soon as it hit the car, within, I guess, an hour or so of us getting the call from the, from the resident, we had folks out there cutting that tree up, and it was, the next day when I went on the site, it was, I couldn't even tell if it was a situation. But, I mean, just things like that, I wanted to kind of bring, highlight the attention to.
If you have any...
Appreciate the relationship.
If you have any trouble with the acting Public Works Director, let us know.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so I just kind of wanted to put that in the report and bring highlight to that. Also, we had a leak at it 4, 49 Oak Tree, and they have been responsive to that, so I, I can go on and on, but it's been a good, a good relationship. One, I guess, I always say this, but one team, one dream, so to speak. That's the way I feel. All right, we, I also want to talk about the, we opened up the waiting list, and as you know, we, the last time we talked, we had, I guess, a very low number that we wanted to try to respond to. And surprisingly, this year, I shouldn't say surprisingly, but we broke another record. We have 2,000, I think, 2,048, 46 applications. Past, I think, we were doing around 1,100, 1,200, 1,400. As you can see, there is tremendous need. So I'm thankful to the process that we have now. We have an online process, which basically streamlines the whole process. In the past, we used to have to kind of be in one place, and folks coming in and having to have, you know, sitting chairs, and the whole waiting process was, was cumbersome. But this is a much better process, and it's more secure as far as the documents that we have to receive, the personal documents. And so just glad that we were able to do it and open it up, and so you can see the results. We do have a, kind of a chart here that can show you the breakdown of bedroom sizes and how people fell into those as far as the numbers. Security cameras, I have, I'm happy to say, and I can get into the background of it, but we, we had an issue with the contract, and what happened was the company was sold, and our account manager was terminated, I guess. And I guess as a parting gift, he told the company, I guess, or put in the file, that our account was closed. And it was anything further from the truth, but that kind of delayed everything, and we were trying to figure out what was going on. And so we actually got ahold of the new owners, and they are very much apologetic, and as soon as they heard our situation, they got right on it, and they've been all, working with us ever since. And so we have cameras installed now in New Hope, and I think they're gonna be on-site this, coming this week in Mimosa to finish that up, and then move on to Dunning. So hopefully by the end of this month, we'll be, come, finished with that project with all the cameras on-site. And then one of the special features would be for the police department to have access to them by way of a terminal in their office. So they'll be able to see everything that's going on at any time on all of our properties. The laundry service, laundry room facility update, I have with me, if you cared to take a look after the meeting, I have the site plan and the construction documents that are complete. They've been taken over to the building department, planning department. They're under review at this time. We also have a draft bid document, so we're getting geared up for that to, to kind of happen. We anticipate maybe a six... We anticipate maybe a six to eight month timeframe from beginning to end. So I guess maybe no, on sometime in the new year, we'll be finished with this, this project. Moving on. All right, trash enclosure updates. And I know you had a chance to look at your package, but I'm glad and happy for this one because I was always concerned about coming onto the site and seeing a lot of trash that usually gets picked up by the wind. And we're going to do a better job working with our residents. A lot of times, they, they have their children take the trash out. And if they're small kids, you know, if the trash is heavy, they're going to do their best to try to get it over the, into the box, but they, they'll probably miss. And, and then what happens? The birds and animals get into the bags, and then the site is, is trashed. And so with these enclosures, we hope that, and we, I feel that they've helped so far in trying to keep that from happening. And so I'm glad to see that they're up, and if you get a chance, you can go out and take a look at them. Another project that I want to just bring you up to speed with, and this is something that you, we will be getting your active participation in, and it is the development of our strategic plan, because that's going to kind of lay out how this authority goes forward, changes that's going to get ready to happen, I guess, in the next few years. And I want to make sure that we all, we have a good vision so that, you know, we're tracking well and, and can really make some good work happen in the city of Williamsburg. But we were able to get a grant from Virginia Housing for $19,950, and those funds will be used to bring on a consultant. We had a list that we had to pull from that they gave us, and we chose to work with Spark Mills Group, and they come highly recommended. They're working in a number of authorities right now. So they have, they do a good product, and I just wanted to make you aware that that is in the works. And maybe at the next meeting, we'll have them come and begin the whole process so we can get started on that, that good work. Then we have some, get a look at what we've done, I guess, with our employees going out to different workshops and training. And so if you have any questions from what I've just shared or what's in this report, and also we do have rendering pictures of the projects and newsletters. We always try to find a way to communicate effectively with our residents. And so if you have any questions based on what we've put together, we'd be more than happy to entertain those at this time.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the report. Lot of, lot of good stuff in there, and the trash enclosures absolutely make a big difference to be able to do that.
I did have a question on security cameras, but you answered it, because it seems like this project was taking quite a bit of time, and I was just going to ask about that, but...
It's embarrassing, but I'm, I'm happy that we're getting some traction now.
I just had a question about, there was a note in here about the participation in the homebuyer preparedness program being low. And I guess going forward is sort of thinking strategically, is this something that, kind of like reasons why it might be low and how we might improve enrollment? Or do, is there, it's kind of like, is it a recruitment issue or, you know, kind of getting it out there? Or is it just maybe the product is not what people are looking for? So just kind of...
Really want me to talk about this one?
I mean, I don't know, do I? Maybe I don't, no, I'm a tiny, no. So I am just kind of curious about your thoughts on what to do about something that's being offered that doesn't seem to be resonating or getting, taking advantage of.
I try not to be a tattletale.
Okay.
Or, how do kids call a snitch?
Let's hear it.
But, I mean, how you deal with it? All they have to do is talk to their department head or supervisor. That's just, that's a quick fix.
Okay, thank you. Quick fixes sound, sound good?
We report it, but, you know, just to bring you, make, make you aware of it. But I guess that's how you deal with it. Because it's, I mean, it's a requirement, there are requirements, right? And it's part of their lease, and so if you don't do it, then just make your supervisor aware of it, and he'll have a, or she'll have a conversation with you, and hopefully we'll see the next one.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I have no questions.
No questions.
Neither do I.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Moves on to new business and presentation of WHRA Annual Financial Report, FY '22. Mr. Aaron Hawkins, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, as you just mentioned here, to present the report for September 30th, 2022, and to tell you a little bit about the audit process, you know, we came on-site for, I think, a day or two. Julie Fayers had, was once our contact for the housing authority, and she left. And then during the middle of the process, came back and was helping us get through it. So as we finalize things, and so that was exciting to, to be working with her again. I'm hoping that copies of the report were passed out prior to me coming up here today. And I'm not going to go into too many details in the financial report itself, kind of just hone in on a few different pages to talk to you about. And if anyone is, is following along online, it may have a PDF. There is a PDF going out there. When I reference a page number, I'm going to be referencing the, the number at the bottom as I do not have a PDF in front of me, so it'll be the hard copy number at the bottom of the report. And page one is, is the first page and where I always start, and that is our auditor's report, which, which proceeds the financial statements and includes our opinion on the audit, which is unmodified, which means that based on our testing, the financial statements that follow this report or this auditor's report can be relied on to be materially correct. Next page I'm going to point out is page six, and I think it's a useful page, honestly. One of the more useful pages in this report. And it's within the management's discussion and analysis. And this is prepared by management with assistance from their consulting accounting firm, which helps them prepare for the audit. They also help them prepare this, we call it the MBNA for short. And really, this is their opportunity to kind of provide information about the year, what could have contributed to certain numbers. They can also do things like this, which is on page six, which is provide, you know, analytical numbers from this year to the prior year. And it's also on page seven, and that's where you see your operating revenues and expenses. And you'll see that not much really changed from this year to last year in terms of percentages when comparing this year to last year. You know, your revenues were up about 14.2%. Operating expenditures were up about 17.97%. And if you move on to page 12, this is where the financial statements actually begin. And these same numbers are, were going to be on those pages that you saw previously. This is where you actually have your basic financial statements begin. Total assets about 4.7 million. A majority, quite a majority of that is with, is with cash and capital assets. And then on page 14, you see the, the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in, in that position. And, and really, this is something that I hadn't thought about till I was sitting there waiting to, to go on to perform, is you see these two lines on page 14, federal subsidies and federal grant capital funds. You know, once you get federal assistance over a level of $750,000, it actually triggers a single audit under uniform guidance. So it's something to be thinking about as we go along, is you could cross over that threshold of requiring to have, you know, a federal single audit performed, once, once you hit that $750,000 threshold. And as I kind of looked, it did seem like it was maybe 600,000 last year, now it's up to about 680,000. So it's trending in that direction. So something to think about there. Nothing else I had to go over in the financial statements themselves. We did do the HUD submission, which is required, and it is a, that website is, is quite difficult to use. And they weren't happy with the first submission that we did, and then we had to resubmit. And to the best of my dollars, they've been happy with this, this second submission that we put out there. So everything should be concluded with the audit for this year, and would be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I don't know, have any questions, Mr. Vice Chair?
No questions.
No?
So I'm obviously glad that it came back as a clean audit. It's always a positive, with no, no manager's notice, no memos in there. I guess the point that you make about the single federal audit, if we are to obtain that 7, $374,000 in additional next year, we will be well above that threshold.
I believe so.
Okay, and so that'd be something we could be prepared for.
Yeah, it's additional artwork for us, but it's also, you know, making sure your, your paperwork's in order. That the federal audit is, is, can become much more detailed in what you have to do from compliance requirements and things like that, based on the program.
Hopefully your audit doesn't cost 371,000.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming in today. Any other follow-up questions? No? I think we're set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that requires any action, is that correct? Okay. All right, so it takes us now to...
Oh, it does, it says.
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So I move that we accept the FY 2022 Annual Financial Report as presented.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. Red Cross?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Chair Pons?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kern Cheer?
Aye.
Ms. Prescott?
Aye.
All right, next is consideration and action on the lease amendment and policy changes to the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority admissions and continued occupancy policy.
Okay, so we will be as brief as we can be, and this is an opportunity to kind of, kind of do, I guess, update our documents, things that govern what we are supposed to do in accordance with HUD's rules and regulations, and make those necessary changes to the lease that impacts the changes, policies that are coming down. And so I have, I will have Ms. Burton come forward and to give you a brief breakdown of what we have to take action on, and if you have any questions, she being the expert, she can get into the nuts and bolts of what, what we need to do. Ms. Burton?
On the lease, is there any questions anybody have go over? On all of the documents, the update that was stressed the most was to include sex trafficking in the verbiage in the A-COP and the lease. Bless you. That was one of the things that, bless you, that it was stressed. With the coverage of the fair housing to include, that was the identity also, that they wanted us to start including source of funds and the sexual orientation, so that had to be included as well. One thing that I believe that was important also in the lease is it confused some of the residents of the orientation of how we distributed their payments. Some of the residents feel that when they give us their money, they are to tell us how to take it and what to pay it on, which it doesn't work that way. So we have to put it in there that we paid at our discretion. And the way it used to be worded was we listed it, the word, so they felt that how it was listed in the lease is how it was going to be paid. So we reworded it so they could understand that the balance is owed was paid first and the rent was going to be paid last, but it is at our discretion. And that is because the way we, that we can take them to court for unpaid rent. But other than that, the tenant rights are updated, and they're updated from July 1st. So it did update again. So the last page, on page 16 of 17, where it said July 1st, 2022, that is going to change to July 1st, 2023, and they have been notified. That's the lease. Any other questions?
Rogers, any questions?
The next coverage is A-COP.
Sorry, I was muted there a second. One quick question. You mentioned that we had an addition to the lease around disallowing clearly sex trafficking. Does that come from a norm in housing authorities nationally or a spate of issues that we've had in Williamsburg?
It's, it's a national thing, and it's really attached to the VAWA. So VAWA is, is a part of that, and they updated. So VAWA wasn't being enforced at one time, and now the, the verbiage is changing to include that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So that leads us to the A-COP, and the A-COP went through to include the VAWA, which include the sex trafficking and everything. So in every aspect of the A-COP, that was, majority of the changes was to include that verbiage throughout the A-COP. Outside of that, we went through, and some of our policies throughout the A-COP, we had to just update. But the majority of anything in there, if you look through, just flipping through, was they had to deal with stalking and human trafficking through, that's what the, the updates was. We also updated for online for our applications. We are strictly online. We don't take anything in the office. That's even our verifications now. So the applicants have to update their picture IDs, birth certificates, everything is online. So when they have to get in helping, Human Services have been very helpful with that. They've been taking clients in, helping them over the telephone through that new process of updating their identifications through online. So we are strictly paperless now when it comes to applications, which is very helpful to us because, which we're still receiving original documents in the mail. And we can't send them back because then we are responsible for their original documents if they get lost in the mail. So they have to find transportation or some ways of coming to get it back from us. So hopefully, as we continue to do this online, they will be sending us their original documents or emailing it to us, because IT does not like for that to be coming through. And we don't, encrypted doesn't work very, very well with us, and fax comes through black. So our copier blacks that out, so that doesn't work. So the online process goes straight to the server, so it protects them and us, and we don't make copies of it or anything, so it stays and then it's safe right into the system. So the online is a very good system. Any questions on the A-COP?
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
What about those people who are not inept to use, that everything has to be done online? What about those who are not elderly?
We take their phone number, and that's when Human Services step in.
And they will help.
Yes, ma'am.
Less work for you, more for Human Services.
It's true. And then, and then we try to help, but something in the, our office blocks it. We can't even go into our system. The Wi-Fi, we don't know who we've tried to help, but we just, we can't even go into our own system, so. But Human Services, the care team has really, they've even set up today, I think, 10 to 12, and went into one of our conference rooms and helped individuals. So they've been very helpful. So there is ways for them to help, and it's very easy. They take a picture of the documents and send it like a text, so it's very easy.
Well, I made light of it, but we are essentially one Williamsburg and one department. When, when people come to your office, it's, it's, they're in the city of Williamsburg, and it's a, it's a, it's the whole roundabout services that we provide, so I'm glad to that, for that. So any questions on the A-COP?
No.
Questions?
Sounds like most of the changes were kind of funneled down to us from above.
Yes. Where it's supposed to be a paper reduction act a long time ago, we're just getting there, so.
Good, good. All right.
So I move that we approve the lease amendments and policy changes to the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority's admission and continued occupancy policy, A-COP.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Red Cross. Ms. McKay, would you call the role, please?
Ms. Red Cross?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Chair Pons?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kern Cheer?
Aye.
Ms. Prescott?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Franklin, we have next the consideration and approval of write-offs and uncollectible receivables.
I, I would like to do that, but I would, I have to make apologies because I omitted something very important in my update on the operating side, and that is to recognize Ms. Red Cross for her contributions to the Blatton Building. She has been a strong advocate for residents in the building. She's one of contact, if you will, I guess, the on, on facility manager, if I could give her that title. She handles special events, and she even assists with the sick and the, and those who are shut in. So I just wanted to be on record to recognize her for her contributions to the authority.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Ms. Red Cross. It always takes that one extra special person to make a difference in, in your environment. So thank you for taking the time to do that. So, thank you for taking the time to do that. Okay.
Thank you for indulging me. All right, so the consideration and approval of the write-off for uncollectible receivables. During the normal course of operating the one hundred and four rental units owned by the authority, tenants periodically move out and without paying their rent, late fees, and work orders. We have eight tenants who have moved out during the past year owing a total of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and six dollars and seventy-four cents, applicable security deposits as well. To accurately reflect the amount receivable from tenants at fiscal year end, board approval of this write-off is necessary. This amount will be classified as bad debt expense for fiscal year 2023. Staff will continue to pursue collection of deliquing accounts with wage garnishments when possible, but more so with the State's Department Debt Setoff Program. And so, staff recommendation would be for board to consider approval of the write-off of outstanding receivables as of September 30th, 2023, any amount of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Costs to do a business. It happens. It does strike me that every year it seems to be getting a little bit more. I think last year my mind's seventeen or eighteen thousand, before that maybe twelve, so. But I do see we have one particular one that was a rather large amount, so that it probably skewed the data a little bit. Questions?
Yeah, no questions.
No questions. Questions?
Like to make a motion?
So, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the write-off of outstanding receivables as of September 30th, 2023, in the amount of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
Kay?
Ms. Red Cross?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers? Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Chair Pons?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer?
Aye.
Ms. Prescott?
Aye.
No other business to come before us? Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So, I move that we adjourn.
Aye, second.
Kay?
Ms. Red Cross?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers? Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Chair Pons?